Welcome candidates and audience members to the Los Altos City Council Candidate Forum. I'm Karen Gricker, board member from the League of Women Voters of Los Altos Mountain View. First, a few housekeeping items. Today's forum will last about 90 minutes. Due to the nature of a webinar, we can't provide technical assistance to attendees. All forums are being recorded and they will be available on our website the day after each event, and that is on our website and then our elections page. Our website is League of Women Voters LWV and then our city, LAMV. So LWV, L A M V dot org. And when you go to our page, you'll also see a link to the YouTube channel. Visible on your screen will be the moderator, the candidates, and the timer app. Audience members are not shown. Submit any questions about the event through the Q and A. When answered, it will be available to all attending. Chat will not be available. Questions for candidates have been submitted with registrations and you submitted many, many questions. We have combined similar questions to be able to cover as wide a range of topics as possible. We will not have time for additional questions from the audience. Now I'd like to introduce today's moderator, Nancy Cavanero. Hi Nancy.
Hi, thank you Karen. Welcome candidates and members of the audience. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit organization of women and men that promotes informed, active participation in government. We do not support, oppose, or evaluate political candidates or parties, but after careful study, we do take positions on political issues. The League invites anyone who's interested in supporting democracy and local government to join us. Here's the format for today's forum. Each candidate will make a one-minute opening statement. Questions were selected to be relevant to all candidates and to provide useful information to the audience about issues in this race. The candidates will be given one minute to answer. After the questions have concluded, the candidates will have one minute to make a closing statement. An electronic timer will display each candidate's remaining time. The electronic timer will also randomly shuffle the candidates responding to each question. The timer will display the name of the current speaker and the next speaker will be shown in the bottom of the window. We ask our candidates to abide by the following. Number one, time limits. When the timer line turns red, I will say thank you. Please complete your current sentence. Number two, respect. Candidates will not interrupt each other. Number three, fairness. Campaign marketing materials will not be visible on candidate screens. Now, I'd like to introduce the candidates who are running for the three seats on the Los Altos City Council, which are for a term of four years. Please raise your hand as you're introduced. I'm going to introduce you alphabetically. Terry Couture. Terry. Lynette Lee Eng. Coljeet Calcat. Sally Meadows. Alex Rubashevsky. Scott Spielman. Jonathan Weinberg. Thank you for participating in today's forum. We're now ready to begin. First, we're going to be doing one-minute opening statements and the first person will be Lynette Lee Eng. Lynette, please begin your one-minute opening statement.
Hello, I am Lynette Lee Eng, your city council member and mayor in 2019. When you elected me four years ago, I said we needed to get things done. And as promised, together, we got things done. Recognizing that we should do more for affordable housing, I pressed for enforcing rules that keep below-market-rate units as below-market-rate units, protecting our most vulnerable, lower-income population as intended. Some of our parklands were at risk because they were not properly designated in the general plan. When I was mayor, I championed the effort to safeguard our parks by rezoning them properly. Delivering on a longstanding city promise, we also purchased 999 Fremont Avenue in Loyola Corners, preventing overbuilding on that small central neighborhood business site. I am looking forward to sharing my ideas with you this evening. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Alex?
Hello. As a real estate broker and resident of Los Altos for 20 years, I've been keeping an eye on home values and growth of property values. Our neighboring cities like Mountain View and Palo Alto have been increasing their value at a faster pace than we have. Mountain View doubled in the past eight years while Los Altos only gained 30 to 50%. Palo Alto has outpaced our value growth and is more expensive than our price ceiling. I believe that this stagnation of private and city development is the cause and I'm running to help nudge the city back on course in that respect. I would like to remove subjectivity from single-family residential remodeling so homeowners can make the most out of their homes, make them beautiful, and maximize their enjoyment and value, and provide businesses with room to grow and attract patrons safely in our ever-changing environment. In my experience as a contractor, I've stood in front of city representatives and pleaded my case on behalf of residents. I bring a unique perspective by being on the other side of government and representing the people that I may be serving in the future. I believe that a business-forward nature is going to be beneficial for both residents and for the future of our city.
Thank you. Sally?
Good evening, I'm Sally Meadows and I'm running for city council because we need experienced, value-driven leaders with a vision for Los Altos today and who also accept responsibility and stewardship for tomorrow. More specifically, I'm running because I care deeply about our community. I am well-prepared. Serving on council would be an extension of my decade of in-depth community service. We need effective, objective, and fiscally responsible leadership. And through my work in the community since I retired, I've been encouraged by many people to run for office and this year I've made that commitment. I say it's about all of us because it's not about me or my friends or even those who vote for me. It's also about those who don't agree with me and who don't vote for me. It's about understanding that it is the responsibility of council to make resident-focused decisions and those decisions must be fair, objective, for the greater good and forward-looking. This is what I commit to bring to council.
Thank you. Thank you. Jonathan? I can't hear you.
Hello and good evening. Nancy, thank you very much for the introduction and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting the forum tonight. Let me start by saying that I think it's an honor to be on this virtual stage with so many qualified candidates who all love and care for Los Altos as deeply as I do. A little bit about myself. My wife Edith and I moved to Los Altos in 2009. We're raising our young family, a 12-year-old son and a 10-year-old daughter in the Grant Park neighborhood of the city. I decided to run for a seat on the city council because I want to be a voice for the residents and taxpayers of the city. And I want to collaborate with my colleagues so that we can address the challenges of today and position the city for a much better future. My top priorities are fiscal responsibility, getting our litigation under control, social justice, effective leadership in civil discourse, and to protect and preserve our environment, among others. And I'm looking forward tonight to engage with all the candidates and talk about these issues in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry?
Hi, I'm Terry Couture. The town of Los Altos is home for many people from many different backgrounds. My goal as a member of the Los Altos City Council is to strengthen the aesthetics and the economics of our town. The role of a leader involves the ability to research and assess information with efficient speed, respectful thought, and to decide on priorities. There is a need for leaders to have critical thinking, be technically savvy, and decide what's practical and possible. For over 40 years, I've worked in the community and gained a business background including management, teaching, volunteering, Santa Clara County Planning Commission, Santa Clara County Value Hearings Officer, and of course residential real estate brokerage. Crisis management, competent communication, and a dedicated and disciplined work ethic helped me succeed. I believe my background, my personality, my diligence, and my experience will allow me to be a useful contribution to our beautiful Los Altos. Thank you.
Thank you. Coljeet?
Hi everybody. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for speaking today. I'd like to share with you a little bit about my leadership style and my priorities. I've been around many public servants all my life and I've spent 30 years in leadership roles in the tech industry. I'm a believer in the servant leader philosophy. I think good leaders are not leading for their own ego, but to develop and grow other people around them. My leadership style is to build strong teams and empower them to do their best. Everything stems from this foundation. I think we live in a, we'll all remember 2020 all our lives. What a year. So to talk about priorities. Today, I would prioritize the health and safety of our residents, especially our seniors and our businesses, a top job for the council. We are also on a bit of a rocky road in our finances in our town. I can be the steady hand to guide us through these next few years on these financial issues. There are many other strategic conversations that we need to start in our city. We need to have a real plan for our downtown, a plan for our library, our environment, affordable housing, social justice, among others.
Thank you. And last but not least, Scott?
Thank you League of Women Voters for this opportunity. I'm a structural engineer. I practiced in major designs, major airports, rapid transit structures. I'm a business person and worked in Silicon Valley as a marketing director. I started a church. I've been a volunteer in this community for probably 25 years in different capacities. These are some of the things that I care about. I care about teamwork and promoting teamwork on council and throughout our commissions and staff. I care about meeting management, managing our time well. I care about residents, listening to their voices. I care about financial management, managing to budgets and managing to priorities. I care about affordable housing, making housing more affordable for those in need. And I care about fostering business recovery for our businesses, our small businesses in our town. Thank you for the opportunity to offer my thoughts and priorities.
Thank you. Alrighty, now we get to get to the questioning finally. And Max, has everyone rotated? Alright, so it looks like Scott, you'll be the first person to answer the first question. And the first question is, what can you do to build consensus on the council and in the community?
Well, I have a track record of teamwork. I've built it in my engineering capacities. I've built it in my marketing capacities, working with customers to solve their problems. I built it through the Parks and Rec Commission, working with residents and commissioners to reach agreements, consensus. And it's not always easy, but you go out to people and you ask the tough questions and the hard questions and you listen. I care to hear. I don't make snap judgments. I'm deliberative. I like to involve everyone in the decision process that has a stake in the decision. So I have a track record of doing it and I really believe that it's particularly important on city council, council working among each other and also working with staff and working with commissioners. That is an area that's sorely lacking in our town and really needs to be improved. And we can do it. We can do it together. We indeed can do it well.
Thank you. Alright, Terry, you're up next.
Consensus means respect for everybody. That includes the staff, the manager, the council members, and the commissioners who do the work for us, our legal advisor. In my job as a real estate agent, every single day is about making decisions based on all the evidence you can get, doing the research, finding consensus upon people and get it together. And the planning commission and the value hearings officer, it's always about doing the right thing. In my whole life, I've respected everybody and I think that's the first goal, is to listen to the other people, find out what's important, come to a conclusion based on everything that you can find and always respect everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sally, you're up next.
Yes, so I have, my career was in biotech and pharmaceutical. We worked cross-functionally, across nationally, and cross-culturally. So there was a lot of getting to know people and how to work people across different backgrounds. So in my experience locally, local government, our nonprofits, and volunteering with service service clubs in the community, I've again worked with many different kinds of people. So the main thing is, is to listen, to respect people's views, even when you don't agree, and maybe even particularly when you don't agree. Because I've seen in my experience that when neighbors talk to neighbors and actually listen to each other, they can reach solutions, or at least they can understand where each other is coming from. So if we work together to creatively solve problems and constructively solve problems, we can do it together.
Thank you. And Jonathan?
Boy, I think that the first question really is one of the most important that's going to be asked tonight. I have seen the city of Los Altos somewhat devolve into an us-versus-them mentality and I'm very concerned about that. That's not the sign of a healthy society. That's not the sign of a healthy political body. I am a real estate attorney and the bulk of my practice is litigation. So it may seem kind of strange to hear this, but in my experience, invariably, the best solutions are solutions where disparate interests come together, communicate, listen actively with each other, show respect, and find a solution that works for everyone, or at least is the most acceptable to everyone. That almost always brings us to where we need to go. I think that council has an obligation to bring in as many parts of our community as possible, be honest with them about the constraints the council has, but be transparent about the process to make sure that there's trust and camaraderie amongst the citizens.
Thank you. And Coljeet, you're next.
Yes, I think it's a great question that at some level, not one of the most important questions facing us right now. It really bothers me, like it bothers a lot of people, to see that so many of our council votes are split 3-2 as opposed to getting much more consensus around decisions. You know, especially when we look at ourselves, we all chose to live in this town. We like this lifestyle. We're all fairly homogeneous. We're not even a town that has very different parts, you know. So it's a very similar kind of town in many ways. So I think it's just a question of the fact that we are not listening to each other. We're not sharing empathy. And I think we're not really getting to the bottom of the part of the issue. There are trigger points that we all have that get us away from the actual meat of the issue. And I think we just need patience and camaraderie to be able to sort of get to it. There's also a little bit of an issue of just civic discourse and civil behavior that I think we all need to sort of abide by and that will go a long ways.
Thank you. And Alex, you're next.
So as a project manager and general contractor, I've worked and managed large teams and worked with homeowners. I've worked with hard deadlines and have accelerated schedules. I'd work with city staff to be as thorough as possible prior to meetings and I would try and get as much public input as possible through email lists prior to the meetings as well. So I'd make sure I'd come prepared to the meetings, fully ready to make a meaningful decision along with, after a meaningful discussion with my other council members. And I would limit kicking the can down the road and make sure that we're getting things done in a reasonable amount of time. The council is a body of elected officials and we need to serve the residents and push to get things done that would help benefit all the residents of Los Altos and move us into the future. So with my experience working in teams, this is exactly what I'd push to achieve, try and make sure that we get all of these things done in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lynette?
Hi, thank you. So serving as a board member and mediator for the Los Altos Dispute Resolution Services in the past, it does give me some background and some training in how we can do some consensus building. What's important is to make sure, to work collaboratively with everyone, we have to treat people with respect, to ensure that everyone is given an opportunity to be heard, to share their ideas, and that they feel validated. And to do so, that contributes to successful consensus building. I have demonstrated through other actions that we have worked collaboratively. I've worked with Joe Semidion in bringing forward the first COVID testing to Los Altos. So it's about consensus building across all areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Alright, Alex, you're going to be first up on this next question. So question number two. Affordable housing targets are set regionally and Los Altos isn't meeting them. How can the city be a good regional partner and please constituents? Alex?
So I believe that we need to meet our affordable housing goals and to do so, we need to work with developers to increase the density in our downtown area and in other commercial corridors where we have the capability of serving commercial downstairs and residences upstairs. And with doing so, we'd be able to create BMR units to provide these affordable housing, this affordable housing. On top of that, I would also work to incentivize homeowners to build ADUs and the incentives that I would seek to provide would be to limit or discount fees if they guarantee that those units would be affordable for an extended period of time, for a period of five years or longer, whatever it is that we'd need to do. So by doing those things, it would naturally and organically grow to be able to provide those services and affordable housing. And at the same time, I'd like anyone who works in Los Altos to be able to have a place here. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sally, you're next.
Okay, so, excuse me. So we have not, as you mentioned, been achieving our RENA numbers. For those who don't know, those stand for Regional Housing Needs Allocation. So the best chance we've got is to work hard. Here's the pyramid I would, or the progression I would propose. Focus first on ADUs. Any single-family lot, when the new ADU ordinance is approved, can have both a detached and an attached or an internal unit. So a single-family could go from one unit to three on a lot. Then let's focus on our multifamily projects. Let's work collaboratively rather than obstructing applications. We'll get at least 15% of those units as BMRs and we can negotiate for more potentially. Let's also adopt impact fees to subsidize additional BMRs and think about what we can do on city-owned land. And that's our part to demonstrate that we take our regional housing needs allocation seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lynette?
So Nancy, do you mind if I ask you to repeat the question because I want to make sure I'm addressing it correctly?
Affordable housing targets are set regionally and Los Altos is not meeting them. How can the city be a good regional partner and please constituents?
Okay, thank you. So to really understand the RENA numbers, the number comes from the Plan Bay area and the focus is concentrated on the Silicon Valley area. The key issue is the jobs-to-housing ratio. Instead of looking at dispersing jobs, they are concentrating jobs in this area. So dense jobs leads to dense housing. We need to push for dispersion of job growth. I have been active with local groups to send a strong message to HCT and MTC to disperse the jobs. That is the basis for the RENA allocation. And in order to provide some affordable housing and meet those goals, we need to make sure that we are working with the right numbers.
Thank you. Alright, Jonathan, you're next up.
Thank you. I anticipate that this is going to be one of, if not the toughest issue for the council to tackle over the next two to four years. My understanding is that our RENA numbers are going to increase by 2, 3, 400%, and that's just a fact. I believe that local communities like Los Altos should be able to control the scope and shape of development. But the reality is that Silicon Valley has a housing crisis. And the state of California has mandated that the solution has to be regional, which means that every city, every community has to do its part. Now, one of the key components of your question was how are we going to make the residents happy with this? And the reality is, is that we're not going to make all the residents happy with it. I think that what council has to do is to be honest and transparent about what our obligations are, what the law requires us, and what we're going to have to do to meet those obligations. I've found that the residents, that the public, have a lot of respect when they're told something that maybe they don't like to hear, but it's told to them in an honest and truthful, in an honest, in an honest way.
Thank you. And Scott, you're up next.
Well, I agree with Jonathan Weinberg. I think it's an incredibly difficult problem. 96% of Los Altos is built, so where did we go? We have some options, going to the El Camino corridor and downtown. And I believe that multi-use and multifamily units in those areas make sense. We need to do that while not causing or cannibalizing our single-family neighborhoods or our lines of sight. To use whatever levers we have, I would say, apply for subsidies, work with developers, emphasize ADUs, be wise about working with all constituents that we have. We need to do the best we can and the reality is, this may be a very difficult long-term problem. We're not alone. 400 of 480 cities are just like we are. It's a struggle, but we will make progress.
Thank you. Terry, you're up.
So as everyone knows, land in Los Altos is very expensive and there's not much of it left. The only areas we have are the multi-zoned areas, the downtown core, and a number of other little spots. Those are the areas that we need to concentrate on getting as much affordable housing as we can in without ruining the privacy of the current residents. We do have building standards on El Camino and those areas that allow for higher density and they do limit exact heights. It may not be sustainable and we're going to have to do a lot of educating with the surrounding neighbors to help them understand that. We may have a little bit of a break because of COVID. A lot of rentals are now on the market, so I think we have to watch and wait to see exactly what happens and be careful not to overbuild. It's already happening on downtown El Camino, so we need to be careful. Thank you.
Thank you. And Coljeet, it's your turn finally.
Thank you. Yes, so a tough nut to crack, as has been pointed out. I think there are a lot of little things we can do. But I do want to point out, you know, some of those things, just because you change zoning, just because you've passed some laws, the market forces have to be there for things to happen. You know, we changed the laws on ADUs about three years ago and I think we've built only 30 of them. So a town of 10,000 homes, 30 additional ADUs in a free market is not a good sign that we can actually fulfill this number by just having ADUs. Higher-density BMR is the same reason. Our land's too expensive. The math doesn't work to be able to do that. So I think the question was about regional responsibility and I think we need to look for a regional answer. So for instance, Cupertino School District, so this is bringing in a party that has a stake in it, has decided to build housing for themselves. Palo Alto School District's doing the same thing. We need to partner with these kind of people who actually have a vested interest in building housing for their own constituents and solve this problem. That's the only way we can rely on market forces. Otherwise, we have to get into the housing business.
Okay, thank you. I'm waiting for that to rotate. Alrighty, so the next question, Terry, it's going to come to you first. And question number three is, discuss the fiscal health of the city and the challenges faced with COVID, lawsuits, and more. How would you improve the financial condition of Los Altos?
Unfortunately, the lawsuits, as best I can understand, there were new laws that came into effect that council, staff, commissions, and the attorney didn't have enough education to make a good decision. I think we have to I think we have to be very, very careful and completely educated on any kind of new rules that come in, so we won't have that kind of issue again. I think all of us are very educated. We'll just need to spend more time on it. As far as helping the businesses, I like the new idea that's happening this week where the businesses are adding little vignettes on each of their restaurants so that the retail can have some space to get their parking in. Any, I had some ideas about getting local sponsorships from our wealthy individuals to help get heat lamps, awnings, contests to go downtown, et cetera. We all have to work together to help keep our budget safe.
Thank you. And Scott, you're next.
Well, Los Altos is overspent and we got caught. We have two problems. Our investment portfolio has declined by about $16 million in the last nine months or so, and we're taking out a $14 million loan. I don't think we planned for the possibilities that things could go wrong. And since they have, we need to be very, very wise with how we spend. We need to cut our spending and we need to be flexible to increase it when, when the time arises. We need to do a much better job of quarterly reporting. Our quarterly reports are late and I think we need to simplify our reports so there's accountability and our residents know what's going on. Lawsuits are always a potential and some lawsuits are appropriate and others are not. I think one of the best things we can do is find the best legal advice for development planning, land use, have the best attorneys we can. I think they will help us in the future.
Thank you. Coldjeet, you're next.
Okay, so I've been on the Financial Commission for about five years and the Chair for the last two. So this is an issue I've been dealing with quite a bit. We wrote to the council, I think in January, warning them that things are getting a little rocky, need to do something about it. We didn't get a meeting until, I think, May. So I think we just haven't had the focus of the city on our finances. So that's water under the bridge. Now, the question you had was how will we get past this? How do we get better? And there are two sides to this. Of course, the revenue side, the only thing we can do on the revenue side is protect our sales tax revenue and TOT revenue. And that has to do with helping our businesses and downtown flourish because once that starts, our revenue will come out. And on the expense side, we have to cut down on all these expenses we have that are coming as a surprise. Lawsuits have cost us millions. I think we have, actually are fairly under utilizing some of our resources. So we need to focus on keeping our expenses down in every area. I think I want, I'm not sure if we're, Scott's getting the data about the loss in our
Thank you.
portfolio is still pretty steady. Thank you.
Thanks. Sally, you're next.
Okay, so just briefly on the financial side, because I think previous speakers have touched on it more. We need to reduce and eliminate wasteful spending, minimize borrowing that we may need to do to complete the community center and focus on increased transparency in the budget. But let's talk about the COVID-related effects and how that's affected our local businesses. So we want to support and collaborate with the local businesses across all seven of our districts to help them develop and help them implement a sustainable economic recovery plan. So let's continue the collaboration that has been started with the Chamber and LAFAA, in the case of downtown, businesses and property owners and restaurants to identify issues and potential solutions. Council's job is then to facilitate implementation and allocate city services and resources to get it done. And let's address ground floor zoning. Can we open that a little bit more to creative fitness services or whatever to get new businesses in? Because once the businesses are healthy again, we're all going to be looking a lot better.
Thank you. Thank you. Alex, next up.
So I believe that the budget's going to be in a deficit this year. And so we need to increase revenue and help boost our businesses and their capability to meet with customers safely to be able to help minimize that dent. On top of that, this is basically part of my platform where if we increase redevelopment for individual properties and basically have ADUs being built by incentivizing those, certain events like this are reassessable, which would also increase the property value, which would increase the property taxes, which would then come back to the city. So I absolutely agree with other candidates saying that we need to minimize our expenditure on lawsuits that don't lead to anything. Not that there wasn't a good intention for those, but at the same time, it's taxpayer money that should not have been spent. So basically, open businesses back up safely and allow for redevelopment, which would increase funding to the city.
Thank you. Lynette?
Thank you. Well, regarding the budget, we need to keep expenses under control while reaching to provide. We really need to understand the trade-offs of the cost of not moving forward our needed infrastructure and the decline in revenue from the current year. So we need to really understand how to defer how much money the city allocates possibly to our pension accounts. We are supposed to be, the council will be receiving a budget update next month. We have, we have a need for conservative management of our finances for an unknown future. If you look at my record, you will see that my voting record reflects that I have consistently taken a fiscally conservative position. We need to learn to do more with less. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Jonathan.
Thank you. So in this fiscal year, my understanding is that we had a budget kind of spend about $43 million based on expected revenue of $45 million. And the last numbers that I understood were that we're now expecting about a 10% deficit in our revenue. So clearly, there's a potential for a problem. I don't think it's at a crisis level, but it certainly is a concern. I think that the council's top priority has to make, has to be to ensure that public safety is provided for. And we also have to maintain our civic assets. One of the places that I want to look to improve the city's finances is with litigation. We are embroiled in a lot of litigation where we have no chance of winning. And frankly, it is irresponsible of the council. Not only are we finding ourselves in lawsuits where the city is not following the law, but we are not being honest with the residents about what's going on. The council members that are making politically decisions that seem to be politically easy are not putting these liabilities on the books. And that's not being transparent. That's not being fiduciary.
Thank you. All right. Alex, it looks like you're going to be, oh, nope. Sally, you're going to be first on this one. Question number four, public parks are important to residents. Discuss the decision-making process and timeframe you would use when faced with conflicting public ideas for new uses and amenities in a park.
Well, that's why we have the Parks and Rec Commission to flesh out some of these issues. And we have two fine representatives here tonight. But so to be more serious, really, the council will give direction to the commissions to take up certain items. The commission, regardless of what the issue is, will flesh it out and in theory brings forward recommendations to council. Our parks are precious land. We certainly want to preserve our green space. And then the question is, how do we allocate it? Do we allocate certain resources on there? Do we allocate that certain animals have access to it? Or what uses do we propose? So I think that we've seen at Grant Park in particular that the community feels that they need a master plan for that space, which I think makes sense. Unfortunately, that came after there was an offer of some resources there. But the community's going to move forward with the master plan, I guess. And then it's Parks and Rec's job to work that through and help a good recommendation come forward to council.
Thank you. Terry?
Everybody knows our parks and our open spaces and our backyards are the most important thing that the Los Altos can look to. I think that the residents, we need to get the list of all the residents so we have contact for every single resident. So when these issues come up, everybody can have a voice and we can find out exactly where everybody stands. The last Grant Park thing seemed to come up too quickly for people. They didn't have enough information. It became crisis level. But if we can get everybody on board with the correct contact informations, et cetera, we can be in a much better position to be educated on what the public wants and where they want it and how they want it. Because after all, we still want to keep our parks and everybody has a specific thing that they want with their parks. And we can find a spot for everybody if we just all get together and think about it. Thank you.
Alex?
So my platform is all about providing more services to the residents to make sure that they're getting the most enjoyment out of Los Altos. And so I would make sure that the residents are being listened to, especially the ones that are most impacted by this. For example, if there's a bocce court or a dog park or something else detracts from the uses directly in front of a certain property, I would listen to those residents and give them a little bit more weight in the decision-making. But at the same time, I believe in the greater good overall. And so as long as these proposals are well thought through, whether they're with a general plan for the park or with basically enough community input, I would weigh that in our decision-making process. But for sure, I believe that we need space for our residents to be able to go outside, especially in COVID, for their children to be able to exercise, for their dogs to be able to exercise, and just to be able to get a mental break and do this quickly, but safely.
Thank you. Coldjeet, your turn.
Yes, so I think this is an interesting question because it really, the underlying question is the most important one in it, you know, which is, I think, the question really is the, the lack of credibility and the confidence in the processes that exist why we are having these problems. Our council needs to provide the cover to our Parks Department staff, our Parks Commissions, who have really smart, very high-powered people who are spending time and volunteering to actually solve these problems. But unfortunately, they're not getting the support. This is very similar to the Financial Commission, as I mentioned to you. For six months, we were all willing to resign because we were not getting anybody in the council to listen to us pleading that we need to redo our budget. So the issue really here is that we all need to strengthen our processes. We need to have confidence. We need to be able to support the processes. So no matter what the outcome comes, we should be able, we can actually respect it and live with it as residents of this community. I think that's the, I think that's the underlying question that is being asked here.
Thank you. And Scott, it's your turn.
Well, I think parks are very, very important to our city. Unfortunately, we have limited parkland compared to other cities. We have the lowest parkland per capita. So we have limited parkland. What do we do about it? Well, I think we need to share our parkland. Residents need to be able to share and see that multiple people can get benefit. You know, that parks aren't individually specific. To evaluate any particular proposal, I think there are three things, the three Ps. We need a plan. We need people to be heard. And we need to be, need to have proposals for different alternatives. At Grant Park, that's exactly what we need before we decide on bocce ball. We need a plan. We need a master plan. We need residents to have their voices heard. And we need to look at the different alternatives. And when you proceed in a logical basis, when people are involved, you get to the right conclusion. I have experience doing it in Lincoln Park, Heritage Park, and Grant Park. I believe it's important work with residents.
Thank you. And Jonathan?
Thank you. So I've served as a Commissioner on the Parks and Recreation Commission since 2015, almost six years now. I've had the honor of serving as both the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Commission. Our parks are extremely important to me and our recreation department is extremely important to me. There is a tension because people who live closest to a park are going to be most impacted by any changes to the park. On the other hand, the residents of the entire city do expect a return on investment. Now, I believe that parks are supposed to be places for people to congregate. Parks are places where communities are built. Therefore, it's really important to try to understand what the overall benefit can be to maximize the enjoyment of our parks by our city. One of the things that I spearheaded when I was the Chair of the Commission was to put together a subcommittee to look at dog parks and fenced-in dog parks or awfully showers. That was a two-year process and it's still not done. But we made progress by reaching out to the public and finding out what disparate interests could
Thank you. And Lynette?
Hi. I served on the Parks and Recreation Commission for 11 years. During that time, we had formed the Parks Master Plan. The Parks Master Plan has, it's like the guiding tool that provides priorities that goes into certain parks. If a new plan is provided or new ideas are provided, city staff as well as the council and the commissions can decide that a work plan for a certain park may be needed. A plan needs to be developed, public input needs to be gathered, and a final plan needs to be approved. So the most important thing is understanding the process, the policies, and the procedures in place. Once those things are completed, we will see if whatever suggestions, recommendations can be implemented to be part of the plan. As a person who worked with council in the past?
Thanks. All right. So question number five. You're finally first. So question number five is, Los Altos is creating a task force on policing. What recommendations do you have to strengthen public safety and trust?
Yes, so first of all, I think we're in a fortunate position in our town that we haven't had any major incidents that have been on national news. And I think it's a great opportunity for us to have an open and honest conversation about race and policing in our city before we have an issue. So, and I'm really, I think, quite happy to see the openness of our police chief to be able to be engaged in this dialogue. So I think we have a good start in overall in this, for this task force to be able to recommend good things. Already, the three things that were recommended, I think, are all good steps. The first one being collect more data on stops so that we can actually have the data if we have an implicit bias. Secondly, we all have biases, so let's work on our implicit bias training. I think there's no shame in admitting that. And lastly, I think the oversight, the police, even if it's just an encouraging word, saying you do a great job. I think that's really good for the commission and the police to hear that. So all three of those recommendations, I think, are really good, but I look forward to the task force elaborating more on that.
Thank you. Jonathan, you're next up.
I think our police department does an outstanding job. But when the city council held the town hall on policing, I was really shocked at some of the stories that I heard and some of the other perspectives that were presented. I think that we can have a police department that protects our property and protects our safety. And we can also have social justice. I believe that the police department wants to give us the best services that it possibly can. Our police department has to have the trust of the people that we're serving. We give our police department an enormous amount of responsibility. They have the authority to deprive someone of their liberty, to protect property, and in the most extreme cases, to take a human life. So I think that we started along the right path by having these conversations, by finding out where our police department has an opportunity to improve. I like the idea of the task force that's being formed. I think that we need to get the AB 953 statistics as quickly as possible. And we need to give the police department the tools and training they need in order to address any systematic racism or bias that may exist.
Thank you. Alex, your next up.
So I think the task force is a good idea to help provide some accountability and transparency to put people's minds at ease. The police is doing, the police are doing a wonderful job overall in Los Altos at keeping the residents safe. And I would also like to invest in additional programs to provide some services that are not emergency-related for the police not to have to do those. But that would only be after those pilot programs would be up and running to limit the amount of how thin the police would be spread. And so with that said, overall, the, the idea is the residents with the block action teams can also do some basically observing and reporting to assist the police. And in the actual task force, the accountability that'd be provided would help residents' minds at ease. Thank you.
Thank you. And Scott, you're next.
I believe, I believe as well that our police are doing a good job. They have two roles. They have the role of I believe, I believe as well that our police are doing a good job. They have two roles. They have the role of crime prevention and they have the role of keeping our streets safe. Both of those are important. I would never want to see an incident in our city like has happened in other cities where, where students and others have attacked students in schools. So I believe in school resource officers. I believe though in five things that are important. We need to keep effective records about how our police are stopping individuals and any discrimination situation needs to be investigated. Police need ongoing training so that they are up to date on any kind of discrimination issues. Communication is important between police and residents. Feedback, a feedback mechanism is appropriate, so therefore I believe the task force makes sense. And all the constituents should be involved in the task force. Students, parents, staff and police. And I believe that, that we will do a much better job in the future.
Thank you. And Sally, you're next.
So safety and social justice are not mutually exclusive. In fact, I'd argue that they go hand in hand. So social justice breeds more safety. And so I think that is the goal for all of us. And so how do we get there? We've talked about already increased data transparency, anti-bias and diversity training. Yes, we want to do all that because all of our residents need to feel safe and we must honor the experiences of those residents who haven't felt safe and who have felt discriminated against, even if each of us individually may or may not have been. So moving forward then, the task force is going to look at the schools and the school resource officers. As I've mentioned to some people, I've worked for a decade in our schools and we need to explore why the school resource officers in the Mountain View part of M V L A seem to actually work well and why it's the school in Los Altos High School that does not. It's not necessarily the position. Let's look at what works. Thank you.
Terry?
I have to commend the residents of Los Altos and the students of Los Altos. The residents watch out for each other. They drive safely. They take care of their yards. They watch. They're careful. The students that had the march were calm and safe and respectful. And I think it has a lot to do with our community ourselves and we're lucky to have such a great police force. It's good we're doing the task force because then we can find what actually seems to be the issues that we don't know about. Some people do know about. I'm happy to find out about the collects on stops. I'm, I'm happy about the neighborhood watch and the block actions because it helps our elderly and it helps the people who aren't, who are at risk. I support the police and I'm looking forward to finding out what exactly happened with the school resource officers. I know I was always in a lot of trouble with Jeanette Barquette at Homestead High School, so I get it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lynette, it's your turn.
Thank you. We need to make sure everyone who lives, works, or even just drives through Los Altos is treated equally with respect and everyone feels safe. Moving forward with the task force is definitely a positive move. It does build trust in the community that we've heard from the public and that we, we are moving forward with them. The other thing on how to increase public safety and trust is we have code enforcement officers that work with neighbors that if you are concerned with the safety of your home, they can come and help you reinforce the safety of your home. We have neighborhood watches. Neighborhood watches is another program where neighbors are vigilant and work together to ensure safety within their community. We have the block action team, which the council is also always encouraging for more block action teams in the community. And it's once again about neighbors helping neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Looks like Sally, you're first again.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get Jonathan to be the first, sorry.
It changed. Sorry. Yeah.
I'll keep Jing.
Thank you. Okay. Are we good, Max?
We, we are good.
Okay. All right, Jonathan, you're going to be first instead. Okay. Question number six. What climate friendly policies would you like to see adopted?
So I believe that climate change is an existential threat. And I believe that Los Altos has an obligation to do everything in its power to help do our part to, to either eliminate or at least alleviate climate change. We have electric car, electric vehicle charging stations and we have solar panels and, and that's great. It's a start, but it's quite frankly, very passive. The city does have a climate action plan and I'm glad that we do, but it's old. I think it was, it was developed in 2013 and it was modified twice in that time. We need to modernize it and I really wish the city council would prioritize revisiting the climate action plan and putting together a plan of action that is both attainable and ambitious so that we can reduce our carbon footprint. Now, some of the basic things that we can do is to ensure that our city vehicles are being driven less. I think that we can do things to encourage financially or otherwise to make sure that, that our residents are installing energy friendly appliances, but I want to see us do more and I want to see us have a plan.
Thanks. Terry, you're up next.
The building codes are pretty specific about doing, using energy efficient appliances when you do a remodel or when you build a new house. They have lots of insulation requirements. They have zoning requirements for each room, et cetera. One of the biggest things that we can do to help on climate, getting rid of carbon is more trees. Trees do one of the biggest jobs on removing carbon from the atmosphere. The more trees we can have, the better. I know there's a program in town where people are doing that. Anybody who can put a tree on their property should be encouraged and rewarded for it. Keeping drought resistant plants, keeping low irrigation, pool covers, all those kinds of things help to keep our, our energy low. And any other kind of reducing energy is a good thing.
Thank you. And Scott, you're next.
I agree that climate change is, is a very, very important issue. Its main contributors are automobiles and industrial waste. And so everything that we can do to encourage electronic vehicles and offer electronic vehicle charging stations in our city, I think, makes a lot of sense. We have a tremendous group in our city called Greentown that I am a supporter of. And they care about solid waste. They care about water. They care about air. And they do a great job in educating and they emphasize planting trees. So use them. We can use them. That's an available resource to us. We need to conserve. That is important. And we need to encourage people to commute by bicycles or other means that, that are in energy or low energy consumers. I believe that available energy is important. That we're going to need natural gas for the next number of years. We're going to lose nuclear power. So we want to do what we can to keep energy available, especially to those that need it.
Thank you. Sally, you're next.
So we're facing increasingly horrible wildfires, extreme weather and drought, plus safety and reliability issues with the grid. So one of the main things that we need to do is focus on conservation. And all of us can do more to reduce our vehicle miles driven, our energy consumption and also conserve water. So get rid of our lawns, go to low water use plants. But in the, where we have to go to though, in long term is, is creating and incentivizing where if we put solar on, we can actually have onsite battery storage. So we recently had put solar panels on and onsite storage was still a very expensive option. So really to preserve the, the reliability of the grid, we need to be able to produce and store our energy. Then let's focus on more electric appliances, all electric buildings, lead and similar building standards. So we're really doing our part to combat climate change.
Thank you. Lynette, you're next.
Hi, thank you. Yes, we need to continue to work with our partners like Greentown, the Green Canopy Program and the Plant 500 Trees where they provide reduced price on trees for our residents. That's a program that we would like to see continued and like to promote. We need to work with the county. They have incentive programs and working to promote the rebate programs offered to our residents. I would like to see a ban on single use plastics. We are doing, what we are doing now is not enough and it's, it's not effective. We must understand our impacts from the beginning of the production process to the very end. For example, water bottles, plastic water bottles, we need to understand that it has made a significant, their impact is significant and we are not able to recycle them now. So that's why, once again, I'd like to see a ban on single use plastics and more education in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Cole Jeet, your turn.
Yes, thank you. So yes, I think I'm glad to hear that everybody on our panel thinks climate change is real and it's going to impact our lives. In fact, I talk to young people and some of them are really questioning whether they should have children. You know, I mean, this is, this climate is, is a tough issue for a lot of people. With all due respect, I do want to point out to people on this council as well, on this committee as well, that yes, trees are great, but our carbon footprint is way, way past what any amount of trees that we can plant can do. Greentown supports spring trees, but Greentown is also the main organization pushing for reach codes. And I was wondering for the longest time, why are they pushing for such a small change when only a couple of dozen homes actually become completely no fossil fuel burning homes? But I think the symbolic gesture and the aggregate value of the carbon reduction is huge. And I'm, I'm, I've always felt that I think we need to take those kind of steps. And I feel I really applaud those people who are really pushing to save our environment for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Alex, it's your turn.
So my platform is actually about remodeling and providing more incentives for people to actually, if you renovate your house, which that triggers Title 24 and streamline the approval process to be able to allow people to do this safely and quickly. So by doing so, the houses become better, they become more efficient and don't need to spend as much on heating, cooling, whether that's electricity, natural gas, whatever it is. Our power grid is not all green. We're still using gas. We're still using there's some solar, some wind, but we have gas, natural gas backups. So the idea is we have to generate clean power. That also means that we need to incentivize people with solar installations. And I agree with Sally here saying that we also need to be able to help provide for battery backup so they don't have to use generators. And also urban villages minimize traffic and they're much more efficient and have people all together. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next question is going to go to Alex, is that right? And the question is, what capital improvements are needed in the city?
So well, we need to finish our community center and we need to finish our emergency operations center. And then from there, I would help with parking structures for businesses in the downtown areas and other commercial areas. I know they're not the most beautiful of things, but at the same time, it will allow for businesses to take over streets given the COVID crisis and allow us to be able to connect with, allow those businesses to be able to connect safely with customers. So it would be increasing parking and then on top of that, if we can afford it and if it's in our budget and fiscally responsible, I would work with developers to build the affordable housing units so we can start meeting arena goals. So those would be the main capital projects that I would work on to help businesses and homeowners and at the same time, new residents to come in. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally?
All right. So after completing the community center, obviously we need to do that. I would consider prioritizing, for example, Grant Park Community Center improvements, looking at our downtown our downtown vision projects, a new main library and bicycle pedestrian access improvements. I think all of those things, which we can certainly do at the same time, but all those will add incredible value to our community. I am not mentioning parking just because I feel that the, the changes brought on about the pandemic may, may lead to long-term changes in how we commute or don't commute and how we work. And so that's also what's, so we may not need as much parking and this is also why I would prioritize, as I mentioned, bicycle pedestrian access improvements. And those improvements will also feed into making people more comfortable to commute without their cars, which also adds to positive climate effects. So that's where I would see prioritizing capital improvements.
Thank you. And Cole Jeet, your turn.
Yes, so before I, we pick on with the capital improvements, we have to sort of look at really our financial picture. As many of you know, this year, we're going to have about a million and a half month to use for capital improvement, which is because we still had money left from last year. Next year, our capital budget is down to $400,000 because of the reduction in our revenue. So we have a little bit of a challenge to be able to sort of just come out of our financial ability to actually do any kind of projects. So we have to be careful that we don't overspend or overextend ourselves. But there is a very nicely published CAFR, which the Financial Commission helps put together that has all the capital projects that the council has voted on and approved. It's very long list of 70 plus projects and the citizens are welcome to look at it and react. But my main point I wanted to bring forward is that we really have to look at our budget before we sort of get carried away on, on getting behind one or the other.
Thank you. And Terry, it's your turn.
Capital improvements may have to wait for a few years. We have to finish paying off the loan for the community center. We're currently on a process of repairing a number of streets that had gotten waylaid in the last few years and hadn't been taken care of. So that is an ongoing project. As Cole Jeet said, there is a whole list of capital improvements that are already approved and should be looked at before we think of anything new. I am very concerned about the budget. I know that our property taxes are going to be okay, but I have a very worried about the business taxes. I see a lot of vacant buildings. I see a lot of closed businesses and I think we have to be really, really cognizant of where we are with the budget. The residents need to tell us which things they want and which things they don't not want. And we're all praying for the COVID to be over. Thank you.
Thanks. Lynette?
Decisions are made by the entire council and we all have to work together to achieve our mutually agreed upon goals. The police department and the fire department have been identified as facilities that need attention. We have a facilities maintenance report that identifies the state of our facilities. It is critical for public safety that these facilities be in optimal condition. Protecting our infrastructure of Los Altos is very important and as well as focusing on our deferred maintenance. Thank you.
Jonathan?
Thank you. So the top three projects that I would prioritize for capital improvements are the police station, the library and the Grant Park Community Center. My understanding is that the police station actually flood, the basement floods during the winter. The library, I think, was constructed in the 1960s or so and then it might have been remodeled in, in the 1990s. And the Grant Park Community Center got a new roof and some remodeling, but it's still pretty inadequate. And we just built what's going to be a beautiful, brand new community center downtown. But the reality is, is that a lot of the residents in the southern part of the city don't go downtown very often. And I think that the city has a responsibility to make sure that we give them the same type of, of, of modern facilities to enjoy. Now, there's no question that the city's budget is going to impact our ability to do these things. But that leads us to really, I think, what the key issue is, which is that the city has got to stop deferring maintenance. Preventative maintenance is the Preventative maintenance is the most important thing that we can be doing to make sure that it doesn't cost as much when the time comes to replace facilities.
Thank you. And last but not least, Scott?
Well, in this financial situation, I believe we need to delay spending. We need to defer what we can until we really know what the situation is. Certainly, we got to complete our community center. The emergency operations center should be a priority. And down the line, a police station, I would agree that that should be a priority when we can do it. But we got to take care in the meantime of our infrastructure and our businesses and where those should be very high priorities for us. So certain things we may need to defer would be parking structure. To do a library, I really believe we need, need a library. We need a bond issue for that, but I believe we have to get through our financial crisis first. And I agree that that, that should be something that really ought to be on our priority list. My concern is we have too many priorities and we need to focus in and do a few things well, focus on the most important priorities. I also believe that Grant Park needs attention and it's been neglected. So I'd like to see that raised in importance.
Thank you. Alrighty, so Jonathan, it looks like your first step on this one. And this is question number eight. How would you support and expand residential and business diversity in Los Altos?
Well, I think the key to doing that is to really address seriously our RENA obligations. Silicon Valley has a housing crisis. The state of California has made it state policy that, that every city has to do their part. I believe that a healthy and vibrant community has residents from all over the socioeconomic strata. Our first responders, our teachers, employees who work in the city, they should all have an opportunity to live with us. They should all have an opportunity to share the benefits of our community. When we have a community that has people from all different backgrounds, from a diverse set of circumstances, we can work together and learn from each other. We're building more, more community, we're, we're having more types of people who are shopping and spending money in the city and learn from one another and acting together. And I think that's going to help the level of political discourse that we see in the city as well.
Thank you. Alex?
So I would, once again, I go back to the idea of the urban villages, which would protect businesses, allowing them to have access to customers and also providing the affordable housing above with some BMR units and other standard units that are slightly more, that have a higher density. And then also going back to incentivizing ADUs to the residents, as Cole Jeet mentioned. Not many people have actually built them, but if we provided incentives for them to make them with discounted fees, more people would be able to provide them and keep them below market rate. And so with those things, it'd be additionally providing services to the residents, which would attract more people to come in. So affordable housing would increase residential diversity and providing space for businesses would increase business diversity. And at the same time, allowing for underused civic structures, cheap leases for startup businesses.
Thank you. And Scott?
When we return to the subject of affordable housing, which is again a key issue, it is a very difficult issue. But we've mentioned ADUs, we mentioned doing the best that we can to work with developers to, to seek as many multi-unit, multi-family units as we can in the appropriate areas. I think we need to do some planning. I think we need to do better planning for housing and figure out what we do in the limited space that we have to be developed. And so that work, that means maybe working with some people we've not worked with, urban planners, for example. We have a downtown vision plan, it's an excellent plan, it's aspirational. And I don't believe we can achieve all of it, but I think we ought to look at it and try to take the best from it that we have. What can we do in the business community to attract other businesses? Tax incentives, make, make it easy for people to come to Los Altos and open businesses, do the best we can to attract others.
Thank you. Cole Jeet?
Yes, when I heard the question, I thought you were asking, how can we have not just people who work at Google, but also at Facebook? Largest point that I think we all know is that our average age of our resident in Los Altos is over 40, 45 or something. The only way I think we can sort of address diversity is if we bring opportunities for younger people to be able to actually call this place home. And I think that's the driving factor behind affordable housing or entry-level homes. I'm not talking about, you know, subsidized housing, even a, even a million-dollar place would be great. And I think that will bring in the diversity, like San Francisco's average age is, I think, 28, you know? So I think you will bring, bring quite a lot of changes. Business diversity is actually a tricky question. You know, with about 200,000 or more as an average income of a home, the businesses that do well here are the affluent, the ones that serve affluent people. So the market dynamics of it, of us being able to sort of bring in low-end businesses just doesn't work, I think.
Thank you. Lynette?
Thank you, excuse me. So when you talk affordable housing and a diversity of affordable housing, we also, by providing a diversity of affordable housing, it would also provide, it would support our businesses because having the workers be able to live within the city is important. In order to, we need to add more. We have been adding more luxury and small amounts of moderate-rate units. We need to do more. We need to work to increase low and very low, below-market-rate units. We need to encourage more rental units. Below-market-rate units remain, I have encouraged below-market-rate units to remain, to remain below-market-rate units in perpetuity. We need to seek housing grants to support housing for individuals, such as those with special needs, veterans and seniors. These populations have been ignored. So if we want diversity, we have to provide a range of diverse housing opportunities. Thank you.
Sally?
So I want to touch on the ADUs first and hear people saying, well, there haven't been that many built. But again, there's a new ordinance that's in front of council that it streamlines ADU application process and for the first time really enables two ADUs on a lot, one detached, one interior or attached. So that really does have potential, particularly the attached don't necessarily involve that much construction. So that offers potential there. But then I think we need to look at the multifamily, particularly if we talk about diversity in businesses as well. Let's look at what's going on downtown on First Street. If we get a vibrant residential environment there where we have some two or three or even maybe some four, but let's say three-story condos along there, there's a whole bunch of people then who are living downtown who can walk and frequent the businesses at night. A lot of our businesses have been reliant on people who work in town. If we actually have residences in town, that will feed positively in the businesses and increase the, the need for the type of businesses that move into town.
Thank you. And Terry, last but not least.
The local businesses downtown are actually fairly diversified. I've been to a lot of them. I think what they need is they need support in paying their rent. We have a lot of business, a lot of landowners that could give a temporary reduction in leases to get them back up and running, to get new, new shop owners in, possibly give them a break in the business fees, et cetera, for the first six months till they can get up and running. The, the, the farmer's market has a lot of diversity in it. The art, the, the virtual art that's coming now, that's very diverse. I think we do a fairly good job of that. We just are very impacted by the COVID right now. As far as affordable housing, the price of land is so expensive that we're going to need to have some kind of grants to help us get affordable housing in Los Altos. And we're just going to have to work on it, maybe next year or the year after. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, you guys, we're to the last question. So this one, I think you'll like. And it looks like Cole Jeet, you're going to be first on this. And I think it's everybody's favorite question. Ask and answer the question that you wish we had asked you. Cole Jeet, go ahead. I can't hear you.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, there.
Ask me how to unmute myself. I wish you'd ask me, why me? And I would, I would love to answer that. You know, there are, there are some incredible people. I think anybody who steps forward to serve, you know, is, is phenomenal, making a huge gesture. And I think it's really to be respected and admired. I have not been that brave. I have just been pushed forward by a few people, some residents, to take a chance, mostly because of my interaction with the Financial Commission and kind of embroiled in our financial issues for the last year and a half. I was spending way too much time trying to explain our, our issues to the council. And so it was felt that maybe I could help in this particular time in our city to help through our financial challenges. I do feel like I'm also the face of a new Los Altos and I do want people like me to be involved and engaged in our city and call this their town, just like I feel very blessed to be able to do so.
Thank you. And Scott, you're next.
Well, the question that will ask me, I think that's very appropriate, is what will I do? What do I care about? What are my priorities? How will I affect the city? Let me give you six or seven things. First of all, I'd offer teamwork. I'm a proven team builder and team player throughout my whole career, even working in the city with Parks and Rec. I build teams and my teams have done very well. Secondly, I like to see results. I like to get things done. I manage to, to results and I believe that's really important in our city. Third, I, I'm a good meeting manager and I'm effective in running meetings and being part of meetings. And I believe that our meetings need to be better, better managed. Fourthly, I engage residents and I will do that. I have a track record of doing it. Fifthly, I have a heart for finance and I want to see our financial reporting improve. Sixthly, I believe affordable housing is important and I will work hard towards that. And lastly, business recovery. I'd like to see us do everything we can to make our businesses thrive.
Thank you. And Sally, how about you?
So I think the question would be, so tell us about what does having a resident focus mean? So I want to talk about why we all are, to some extent, resident-focused. Because by definition, each of us, as candidates, must be residents. Each of us, as candidates, will get some number of votes. Some of us will get more than others, but therefore we each represent residents and our resident focus. We all agree Los Altos is a wonderful place to live and work. And just because our opinions differ about how we can continue to make it even more wonderful, that doesn't negate that each of us is focused on residents. So I think it's important that due process requires a council member to be fair and impartial in making decisions. And a truly resident-focused city council will listen and consider all perspectives, not just those who they agree with, not just those who are in the room, but reach out and understand. And resident-focused decisions are fair, objective and for the greater good.
Thank you. And Terry?
I'm unmuted. What do you really like about Los Altos? I like the library, I like being able to walk downtown. I like being able to walk in the neighborhoods and see the dogs and the people and the old people and the young people. I like looking at architecture on the houses. I like looking at their gardens. I like stopping at a stop sign and just seeing what's going on. I like watching the birds, I like watching the hawks. I have a million hummingbirds in my backyard. I love to garden. I, I help lots of my neighbors. I'm always helping my clients. I've had clients that have been clients of mine for 30 years. There's, there's, and I'm a happy person and I love giving back. That's it.
Thank you. And Jonathan, you're going to be up next.
Okay, thank you. So I think the question that I would have loved to have been asked is, what is my decision-making style? And what should a leader of Los Altos try to accomplish and how to accomplish their goals? I've been practicing as a lawyer for almost 20 years, most of that as a litigator. And I've also been Parks and Rec Commissioner for the last six years. Served as both the Chair and the Vice Chair. And without question, my leadership style is collaborative. I want to work with the city staff, I want to work with the commissions and I want to work with the residents to really identify what are the issues that are facing the city and how can we work together to overcome the challenges and find solutions to problems? Above all else, I think that the city council has to be honest and has to be transparent. There are times where the council is going to have to make unpopular decisions. It is not easy. It is really tough. But out of respect for the, for the residents and out of a sense of a fiduciary responsibility, it has to be done.
Thank you. And Lynette?
The question is, what more can we do with you? Together, I think we can work more to, to help improve outreach. So your input is important, your, your guidance is important. Once again, you are, are on the top of the chart. We work for you. And so together, we would like to learn more from what you need. And once again, it's all about working collaboratively with the community, getting outreach, moving forward and developing our, our city the way you want to see it. People know that we, you have the wisdom and the knowledge and together you have built a wonderful community. And we can continue to do that with your help. So thank you. And I would like to make sure that we continue this, this effort in building Los Altos and making Los Altos a wonderful place to continue to live, work and raise a family.
Thank you. And Alex, finally, your turn.
So the question would be, what would my ideal candidate be and what qualities are needed in a good leader? So I think that the other candidates who would get my vote need to be prepared for the future of a post-COVID reality. The candidates should inform residents of the reasons behind their decisions and get their buy-ins from each resident. That should, they should be cognizant of the residents' time and effort and want to help them, and want to help steer Los Altos into a future to increase services and minimize exposure to litigation. Candidates need to represent the greater good of the city. They need to get things done quickly and work with staff to make the best decisions. They need to be not afraid to create certain developments to be able to meet goals. And at the same time, understand the fears and, and the hesitations of the residents of why they don't want certain things to happen and the fear of change. And be able to help inform the residents, get their input and help us be in the driver's seat of the future of Los Altos and how Los Altos can move forward into the next decades.
Thank you. So that concludes the questioning portion of our forum. And now each of you will give a one-minute closing statement. And it looks like Scott, you're going to be first on closing statements.
A few thoughts. If you were to elect me, I want you to know that I would be accountable, that I would do everything I could to make our reports and our efforts and our priorities and our progress available so that residents and businesses could know how we're doing. Secondly, we need focus. We need focus on a few things, the most important things. And I would hope to bring focus that we would do the most important things well. We have far too many projects and priorities. We ought to focus in and do the most important things now. And beyond that, I listen. I will listen to all people. I will have your back, I will have your ears. I have a track record of being one that goes out to residents, goes out to business owners. I go out and I listen and I try to understand what the issues are. I believe those things are really important. Those things I would offer if you care to give me a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lynette, you're next.
Like I said,
Like I said, Los Altos is a great place to live, work and raise a family. In my next term as your city council member, I will support development of state mandated affordable housing, which takes into consideration both the character and the infrastructure of Los Altos. Further, I will continue to defend and protect our single family neighborhoods and small businesses. In our city, we will celebrate and respect people of all races, ethnic backgrounds, gender, religions and those with physical or mental disabilities. As a fiduciary steward of public funds, I will ensure that we have regular reviews of our revenues and expenses pressing for greater budgetary accountability. Although we are facing challenging times in 2020, we will persevere and flourish again. Choose a leader who works for you. Please vote for me, Lynette Lee Eng for Los Altos City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally?
So as I've already mentioned, I believe a council member should be fair and impartial when making decisions. They should put aside personal preferences and listen to the perspective of all residents and stakeholders. Then they must make constructive, data-driven decisions in the best interests of our community moving forward. I will bring to council my proven leadership skills, integrity and directly relevant experience, including a decade of commitment to local government, our local nonprofits and other volunteer service, over eight years of land use and housing experience through having served on Planning Commission and Design Review Commission. Through my career in biotech and pharmaceutical marketing, I have a strategic planning background and know how to plan today to deliver results tomorrow. I've done the work to understand our issues and the tools we have to address them. I offer objective, data-driven decision-making, will have little to no learning curve and bring common sense, respectful leadership. I respectfully ask for your vote.
Thank you. Alex?
The post-COVID world creates an unprecedented paradigm shift. We are taking for granted everyone's desire to live in the middle of Silicon Valley, close to Apple, Google, Hewlett Packard and other great businesses. The remote work has made this incentive obsolete. So one of the reasons for residents to pay premiums to live in Los Altos versus to live in Alamo is gone. We have, we cannot afford to do the same thing that we've done before. So previous experience of how it was best done in the past is not as relevant. Fresh ideas are needed on how we can behave in this new environment and these turbulent times. Los Altos has to compete for residents and property values to increase, to increase use and enjoyment. We have to look at the city as a business or a mutual fund that all the residents have bought into, our investors and shareholders. We need to increase the property values to increase city revenue so we can supply affordable housing, thriving business and more services to the residents to be more competitive and keep them happy and in love with the city that we all live in.
Thank you. And Kuljeet?
Great, thank you. I always learn something when I'm on a panel like this. That's fantastic. I'm really honored to have been encouraged by several residents to run Los Altos City Council and have elected, I do my post to bring my forward, my leadership and values to this role. Please vote for me if you want an effective council that can provide the leadership needed to guide our city to an even brighter future, particularly for the next couple of years. I'm an empathetic leader who can understand all points of view and help our city make good long-term decisions. Vote for me if you want a sense of pride and civic engagement among all of our residents. I represent the past. I've been here 30 some years. I've raised a family. It's been a blessing to live in Los Altos, but I also represent and share the sentiments and hopes of the new residents of Los Altos. Vote for me if you want a council member who's committed to hard work and I'm willing to make open, clear, fact-based decisions for the greater good. We all love the city, so let's move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan?
My wife and I moved to Los Altos 11 years ago because we absolutely love the charm and character of the city. This is where we've laid down our roots and this is where we're raising our family. And we're proud to call Los Altos our home. As a father, a lawyer, a commissioner and a volunteer, I have a long history of civic engagement and a strong desire to make our city the very best that it can be to live, to raise a family and to conduct business. My professional background and a deep involvement with the city make me uniquely qualified to serve as a member of the council. My commitment to you, the voter, is a promise to listen to the residents, to protect the taxpayers' money and to lead Los Altos with a steady hand. I am endorsed by 10 former Los Altos mayors, the Alliance of Former Los Altos Mayors and the Los Altos Town Cryer. I ask that you please visit my website for more information about my campaign, my stand on the issues and a more complete list of my endorsements. Please vote for me when you cast your ballot.
Thank you. And Terry?
People who know me, my clients and associates and neighbors will tell you that I will go to the ends of the earth to help them. I grew up on Highland Circle in Los Altos and although much has changed, a lot has remained the same. Because I have very successful private business backgrounds, Santa Clara County planning and value hearings appointments, and I'm always ready to help as a Realtor and a neighbor, I will support and represent the residents of Los Altos. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Well, I would like to thank the candidates for participating and the volunteers who made this forum possible. And I'd really like to thank the candidates for doing such a fabulous job of following the time limits, which were certainly short and you guys were awesome. So thank you. The League of Women Voters believes that a democratic government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. And we hope that the insights you've gained from this forum will help in planning your vote. To look at a personalized ballot with information about your candidates and ballot initiatives, please visit the Voters Edge website at www.votersedge.org after you receive your ballot. Voters Edge also provides information about major donors for candidates and initiatives. When this forum closes, our webpage will appear showing our election events and links to recordings of those that have already occurred. For the November 3rd election, please vote early and deposit your signed ballot in a ballot drop box or mailbox as soon as possible. Thank you for helping to make our democracy work. This concludes our forum. Thank you and good night.